Which are just in the beginning stages, not come to a fullness, but we are trying to reach out to people who have not been reached out till now. Recently, we have come across a tribe in interior jungles of Mathia Pradesh. There is a tribe by name Bargonda. And they speak a language called Kai Kadi. There are only twenty-seven thousand people in this tribe. And they have never heard the gospel. There is not even one Christian as per the findings of Christian evangelical research people. But we have been working among them for the last one year. Even today, our servant of God in Khendua, brother Prasad Babu, has gone to this tribe today for the meeting. Also, we are opening in other places like Karagon. So, we request you to kindly pray for these ministries. Now, today's meditation shall we turn to Acts of the Apostles and chapter 20, and shall we read verse 24 all together? But none of these things move me, neither count I my dear unto myself and might finish me my course with joy and the ministry which I have received of the Lord Jesus to testify. I request you to kindly keep your mobiles switched off. I will take just one hour for the first half of the Bible study, and there will be a small gap so that you can go out and have a cup of water or whatever it is, and then come back. So, during the Bible study, I request you kindly don't move out. And also, children kindly sit in one place, don't run here and there. We are in the house of God. It will take only one period, so keep quiet for some time. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, eternal God, we thank you and praise you and worship you. Thank you for the great privilege granted unto me to come to Kadapa once more and to be with thy people. Dear Lord, we thank you for the ministry accomplished in this place during the last forty, fifty years and even more. Dear Lord, thank you for the great servants of God who have ministered toiled in this area for years together. Dear Lord, we remember them. Father, now many of them have gone to be with the Lord, and we are here dear to carry on the work. We confess that we are unworthy. We cannot be compared with their commitment, their dedication. Oh, dear Lord, we pray that thou may work in us, the Holy Spirit may work in us in such a way that we may be able to carry on the work which you have done to us and also prepare thy people for thy coming. We thank you for the theme which you have given to us, oh Father, on which we have started meditating last evening. We thank you for bringing thy servant, brother Sam Williams, and pray that he will keep us in the fullness of the Holy Spirit, that the word of God may come with power and with authority. Lord, even as both of us will be alternately ministering right from the morning till late in the night, pray that the Holy Spirit may help us in our thinking. Thou may control our thinking, thou may control our words. Pray that the thoughts and the words of the Holy Spirit may be communicated without any loss. Oh, dear Lord, have mercy upon us. We bind all powers of darkness in the name of Jesus Christ, and we claim victory, and we stand by faith on the victory stand, even the victory stand of the resurrected Savior. Dear Lord, I pray this prayer in and through the name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ. We have taken the theme from the book of Acts and chapter 20 and verse 24, middle portion. This leads you to the person and ministry of Apostle Paul. I would say that he was greatest of all Christian leaders seen during the last two centuries. He is a visionary, he is a thinker, and he is a speaker, and he is a writer. He was a man of high principles. He guided young people through his ministry and strengthened the weak and the feeble. And he warned wicked people in very strong language. And he comforted the sorrowful. So, by going into the richness of his life and ministry, we will be able to learn many truths which we cannot get anywhere else. Now Apostle Paul was born in a place called Thasus that is presently found in eastern part of the country called Turkey. And he was born in the year AD 5. He was a Jew, but he was a born Roman citizen. He never wrote any biography about himself. But we find from the word of God from here and there, from which we are able to understand about his life. Kindly turn with me to Philippines and chapter 3. And if you read from verse 4, 5, and 6, we get many things about himself. Shall we read verse 4, 5, and 6? We find seven things about Apostle Paul in these two verses, 5 and 6. He says he circumcised on the eighth day. That means he followed the law regarding a devout Jew. Secondly, we find he was from the stock of Israel, of the tribe of Benjamin. And he is a Hebrew of the Hebrews. Touching the Jew, a Pharisee. And he was very careless about his religion because of which he persecuted the church. He studied under a great scholar called Gamaliel. We find in Acts chapter 5 and verse 34, and also Acts 22 and 3. 5:34. And also Acts 22:3. And because he was a born Jew and because he was a Roman, he could use these things to reach out to the Jews with the gospel of Jesus Christ. But the turning point in his life came when he was on the way to Damascus. We find God met him, and that made all the difference for his life. Acts chapter 26, Acts chapter 26, there we find in verse 18. We find why God called him, and that was his mission, to open their eyes and to turn them from darkness to light and from the power of Satan unto God, that they may receive forgiveness of sin and inheritance among them who are sanctified by faith that is in me. And also in Acts chapter 9 and verse 15 and 16. Chapter 9 and verse 15 and 16. His name was, original name in the Hebrew language was Shaul, and the same name in Greek language is Paul or Paul. See, this is only same name, but in two different languages. The meaning of the word Saul or Paul is little because he was a man of short stature. So, we find that he was a man of short stature. He did not have a very impressive personality as far as his physical stature is concerned. We find it in 2 Corinthians chapter 10 and verse 8. Verse 10, 10, 10, 10. For his letters say they, they are weighty and powerful, but his bodily presence is weak and his speech contemptible. So, after he was born again, he spent three years in Arabia. We find it in the book of Galatians and chapter 1. We find that during this time only, he was spending much time in quietness and in meditation in the presence of the Lord. That is, at that time only, he received the revelation from God regarding church and regarding ministry and regarding many other mysteries of the kingdom of God. Episode of Galatians and chapter 1. Verse 15 onwards, I will read little by little. But when it pleased God, who separated me from my mother's womb and called me by his grace to reveal his Son in me. Yes, there we find that it is God who has chosen him before the foundation of the world when he was in the mother's womb. In verse 16, we find the purpose of the calling. This is the purpose for which God has also called us and anointed us and made us what we are. To reveal his Son in me. When we accept Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior of our life, the revelation of the Lord Jesus Christ, his person, his character, his nature, his spirit is revealed in us. You know, this is the purpose for which God has called us. Then a question comes to us, is the Lord revealing himself more and more in your life? Or in other words, is the Lord Jesus Christ who is in you, is he growing in you that you may come to a fullness of the knowledge of Jesus Christ? That I might preach among the Gentiles immediately, yes, preach. That is about his ministry. And his life was a life of fully committed to preaching of the gospel. When God called him, he did not go and ask somebody, some relatives or friends, shall I go for Lord's work? God is calling me. You can ask for their counsel or their prayer. But the calling of a servant of God should be from the Lord. So, he did not go and ask any of these flesh, I mean relatives in the flesh. Neither did he go and consult other apostles or other servants of God. So, he has been spending time, three years in Arabia. And then, when he came into the ministry, he went back to the apostles and explained to them what he is believing. Kindly turn with me to Acts of the Apostles and chapter 11. It is Barnabas who went to Thasus and brought him to Antioch to do the ministry. When revival was going on in Antioch, Barnabas found himself insufficient to cater to the needs of the church in Antioch. Chapter 11 and verse 25. So, Barnabas went all the way to Thasus in search of Apostle Paul. Verse 26, when he had found him, he brought him unto Antioch. And one whole year, they were having special meetings, one whole year, verse 26. We find they assembled themselves with the church and taught many people and the disciples, yes. And in Galatians chapter 2, there we find that he came to the apostles. Verse, chapter 1, verse 18 first. Then after three years, I went up to Jerusalem to see Peter, and I bowed with him 15 days. And other apostles saw I none except James, the Lord's brother. That means he went to Jerusalem and met Peter and James. And then he says, from there he came to regions of Syria and Sicily, verse 21. Then after fourteen years, verse, chapter 2, verse 1. I went up again to Jerusalem with Barnabas and took Titus with me also. I went up by revelation and communicated unto them that gospel which I preached among the Gentiles, but privately to them who were of reputation, lest by any means I should run away. lest by enemies I should run and run away. You see, he went back, first he went and met Peter and James. And he learned many things from them. Then he was preaching the gospel in different places. And then after 14 years, he went back to Jerusalem. And then he explained to them what he was preaching, what he was teaching the people. You see, this is also very important. That is what he says in Galatians chapter 2, verse 1, 2, 3. You know, he says privately he was talking to people who knew the deep truths. So, and he was explaining to them, this is my doctrine or this is the gospel I have been preaching to the people. You know, this is something very important. He says, if I am preaching the gospel which is not in accordance to the revelation of God, then I will be running in vain. We have seen many people, they are doing the ministry. And they do so lot of work. But then that may not be according to the perfect will of God. So many times we run in vain. So we run in vain, that means whatever ministry we do, that is not approved by God. That is why Apostle Paul had to go and explain to important people, the apostles, what he believes, what is his doctrine and how he is doing the ministry. And we find he has been ministering the word of God in Antioch mainly. And in the year while he was ministering in Antioch, he had the heavenly call to do worldwide evangelism. So while the church in Antioch was praying with fasting, the Holy Spirit told them to separate Paul and Barnabas for the ministry for which they have been called. If you take the book of Acts, in chapter 1, we find the Lord is asking them to wait in Jerusalem. They asked him, he asked them to wait in Jerusalem. And he said, then you will be endowed with the power of the Holy Spirit. Then he said in chapter 1 and verse 8, you shall be, you shall receive power after the Holy Spirit is come upon you and you shall be witnesses unto both in Jerusalem and in Judea and in Samaria and in uttermost part of the world. So we find in chapter 2, chapter 2, the birth of the church and advent of the Holy Spirit. And the next few chapters, we find they are preaching in Judea. And in chapter 8, we find in Samaria. And chapter 10, we find the gospel has reached the Gentiles. And chapter 13 onwards, we find the word of God or the gospel is reaching out to uttermost part of the world. So this is the order we find in the book of Acts. In Jerusalem, in Judea, in Samaria and in uttermost part of the world. So in other words, the whole book of Acts can be divided into witnessing to Judea and Jerusalem, Judea and Samaria up to chapter 12 and chapter 13 onwards, worldwide evangelism. This should be the order of every church. Many times we concentrate too much on our local church. But we have to be reaching out to the uttermost part of the world. We should be, for Kadapa, what is your Jerusalem? I would say Kadapa city is Jerusalem. And Judea is maybe Kadapa district. Samaria is other by little away, Sri Kalakulam or some other area in Andhra Pradesh. Wherever the gospel has not been preached, the gospel has to go. But we should not stop there. But we should reach out to the uttermost part of the world. Many times the uttermost part of the world also may be around us geographically. Maybe in our surroundings, there may be communities who has not been reached with the gospel. So the church should be sensitive to the leading of the Holy Spirit. You know, the church has got a two-fold ministry. You know, just remember cross, remember cross. On the left and the right and the center. You see, the center, it represents our relationship with God. The prayer meetings, the Bible study, the worship, the breaking of the bread, all related to our own edification. We should be doing that. That is the basis. But then we should be able to reach out to the unreached. And also reach out to the believers or to the, for the local church believers for their edification, for their exhortation. There has to be a balance between these different type of ministries. In many churches, edification of the local church, teaching of the Bible will be too high, very good. We will be having fasting and prayer and things like that, but we will be very poor in evangelism. There are some churches where they over emphasize on evangelism and neglect studying the word of God in a deeper way. So there has to be a balance. If you read the word of God, we will find that perfect balance between the church or the believer to God and also believer relating to the unreached and also believer ministering to the church. And Apostle Paul's life, when you watch, he did two things. One is he has written letters and that became the New Testament epistles. But at the same time, and at the same time, he has been always on the move to new places, explaining the gospel, reaching out to people. And finally, he was executed in Rome. When he was writing this, when he was meeting the soldiers in Ephesus, as we find in Acts chapter 20. That is the same portion we have read. Verse, verse 21. Testifying both to the Jews and also to the Greeks, repentance towards God and faith towards Lord Jesus Christ. And verse 22. Now behold, I go bound in the spirit unto Jerusalem, not knowing the things that shall befall on me. He says, I am not worried about what is going to happen in Jerusalem. He knows that he may not return at all and see their face again. So he was not worried about what is going to happen. But his testimony is, none of these things move me. I don't consider my life dear unto myself.